So, hey Felix, you want to be my left-hand man? All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. And Jennifer, would you lead us tonight?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, clear and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thanks for everybody coming out again tonight. It seems pretty nice. First item on the agenda, or second item on the agenda is election of officer. And this is for the non-voting secretary position. Where currently, Andrew is secretary. And we are entertaining the
Oh, there he is.
The, entertaining the non-voting secretary nominating Rhonda for that position. So, what I'd ask for is a motion for that?
I think I have a motion to him.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? No, seeing none. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Third item on the agenda is public comments. We're going to limit, again, as normal, to five minutes. If there's anything that you want to discuss with the commission, other than the public hearing in point five A. So, is there anyone here wishing to speak?
All I had was the home stay.
Chris Wallace, thirteen seventy Ruby. Thank you.
You know, the home stay ordinance changes that you all are looking at. I haven't had a chance to fully go through them all, or what the state legislation is. But, you know, just remember, there's a whole lot of people who have apartments above their garage. You know, you may end up with, I mean, there's a couple in my neighborhood. And next thing you know, you got a lot of traffic. You know, a lot of drunk tech fans after the game, making a lot of noise. And, you know, I really never understood how this got here to begin with. I don't think you all, I think you all should have declined to take it up when town council asked you to. Because the bottom line is, there's a process. You pay the money, you write the ordinance. Instead, right now, the taxpayers are footing the bill for some special snowflakes in town to have an ordinance rewritten. Because it requires consultation with staff. They have to research, town attorney, everything else. And we get charged for that. You know, but there was a process that would have cost them to foot the bill. But instead, special snowflakes get special treatment in this town. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close that part of the meeting. And move on to agenda item number four. Approval of planning commission meeting minutes for April first, two thousand twenty-four. Should have been in your package. Everyone had a chance to take a look at it. Any corrections?
I didn't see any.
I don't see any either.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I can second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Very good. Okay. We'll go ahead and move to item number five, the public hearing. The amendment of the Christiansburg Town Code, chapter forty, section forty dash two, definition and section forty dash three. Administrator to allow for additional administrative and planning commission reviews. Proposed revisions to section forty dash two change the definition of plat- to the preliminary plat subdivision for consistency with the Virginia State Code definition. Proposed revisions to section forty dash three include allowance of agent or the planning commission to approve a lot line revision, lot line vacant- vacation, acceptance on behalf, or accept on behalf of the town publicly approve lot line revisions, lot line vacations, except on behalf of the town publicity. Dedicated easements, including not to limit to utilities access access and drainage easements in review of tentative approval preliminary subdivision plats that contain eleven or more lots, but less than fifty lots. And two, allow the tentative approval to the planning commission for the acceptance of the dedication of public right of way on behalf of the town. Excuse me. And preliminary subdivision plats that contain fifty or more lots. So, staff, can you give us a little rundown on this?
Yeah, of course. So essentially, all this code amendment aims to do is to align our town code with what the state code has. So, you know, what the state code requires us to do, but sometimes it does take locality is a little bit of time just to catch up with things constantly changing at the state level. And this is, as you said, specifically is focusing on the subdivision ordinance. And we've done that by modifying our plat definition, as well as adding the definition for preliminary subdivision plat, just to match what the state code says. And then additionally, we've also given the agent the authority to approve subdivisions up to, with lots that have up to ten lots in them. And going off of that, we also have granted with this code, the planning commission, the authority to approve subdivisions with lots from eleven through forty-nine. And then, the planning commission would then be required to approve subdivision flats with lots of fifty and above. So it is, we got a lot of numbers going on in there.
Right, right, right.
But it is a little, it's something that we needed to, I believe, get done just to allow us to streamline that process, as well as, you know, match what the state code is saying and their requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe this came up, I think we were saying back in two thousand twenty-three. And we were entertaining the thought, but we never went any further than that. So, at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to discuss or comment on this issue?
Chris Wallace, thirteen seventy Ruby Street. I didn't move in the last ten minutes. And here's my concern, is though it says town council, right, the next sentence says, "The agent or the planning commission may approve lot line revisions and lot line vacations." And I sent you all a picture, do you? And this is the, that wonderful three hundred and eighty, eighty-six thousand or eighty-four thousand dollar parking lot we just bought. And if you'll notice, down there on the right, there it says, "Current property." And then up above it, it says, "Proposed new property." And I was trying to figure out, how exactly is the town going to give away or the property we just paid three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for to the Montgomery Museum? Without it being in the public sphere? Or public hearings or anything else at town council? And this is how. Because basically, they can appoint whoever they want, be it Rhonda, or Andrew, or Randy, whoever. And, you know, all of the people here work for people. And basically, they could be told, well, you're going to do this on the sly without, you know, and you're going to do it. We're not going to talk about it publicly, you're just going to do it. And that's a, for the price we paid, that's a decent amount of land that they're planning on giving away to the Montgomery Museum. And this was planned from the beginning, and these came from the closed meetings they were having. You know, town council wasn't looking at anything to do with their bargaining position. They were looking at how they were going to screw the taxpayers and get away with it without doing it publicly, which is what they managed to do so far. And if you pass this as it's written, the way I read it, that's exactly what they're going to do. And they'll just get whoever is appointed by council to make the adjustment. It'll show up on the Montgomery County property register. But nobody will know that they just gave a decent piece of property away to some private entity with no public input or anything else. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close that part of the meeting and move on to new business. New business is home stay ordinance amendment discussion. You guys should have a package full. And Rhonda, you want to give us a rundown on the overall thoughts behind this?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, and what I'm talking about too, is because we have, we have a bill that's been on the floor, passed by the senate, held up by the house till next year.
Right.
And if I do a overview, what I'm thinking it's saying is, when that's passed, that's what we have to follow, if we don't have our own amendment or ordinance in place.
Right. Which, if, if something's passed later on, that's totally different than, than what we have, we have to change.
Well, we do have to change.
Yeah, we would have to alter our code to
Not with this, they added in a, sorry, they added in like a specific thing within the bill saying that as long as localities already have accessory dwelling unit regulations in place, they'd be allowed to continue.
Okay, well, then I'm wrong, so, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
Unless they change, yeah.
And the age it does say that the, nothing in this section shall be construed to restrict the locality's passage prior to July one, twenty twenty-five. An ADU ordinance substantially complies with this state ordinance, so.
Yeah, substantially. Yeah, right, exactly.
Right, right, yeah, and
Exactly.
Yeah. But as of right now, and I don't know if you all have gotten a chance to read this or not. But we're, we're compliant with everything that they've passed so far. But the ADU, they haven't, they haven't done anything with yet. So, do, do you want me to explain what the proposal is, or, or what direction do you?
I, I think the difference is, I think we've gone through the home stays. We have that pretty well nailed. But now, it's the accessory dwelling units that we need to see how this fits into everything. Is that fair to say?
Sure. So, as far as if you want to fully allow the accessory dwelling units, is that what you're asking?
I guess we need to
Answer that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to hear the rest of the
Opinion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissions comments and thoughts on, on this as well.
Okay. Well, if, if you have looked at the, the chart that Caroline had sent previously, that kind of gives you an idea of what some of the other localities are doing. So, and it has the the breakdown for Blacksburg, Charlottesville, Avington, and Fredericksburg. And it seems like a lot of localities are, are allowing for ADUs. But the, so the request though was for home stays specifically, to allow those in dwelling units? Or allow them in accessory units, sorry, allow home stays in accessory units. So, if you all are further wanting to, to look into maybe allowing for it to be a, an accessory dwelling unit, then that would be something that we could change as well. So.
Okay. So, commissioners, thoughts? It's a lot to go through, that's for sure, but
It is, but, so, the requests were for the home stay to be able to be an accessory unit, and then further, further, the further request was for it to be that there's, there doesn't have to be, or it doesn't have to be designated as the primary residency for whom ever owns that property. So that person doesn't actually have to live there, it does not have to be their primary residence. So if someone else could buy that property and utilize it for a home stay. So there was, there was two things that were requested to be looked into, to see if it would be allowed.
So, I guess one question. For zoning for residential, it's very hard now to even have an accessory unit to build one, correct? I mean, is it impossible now to build? If I wanted to put one in my house, I want to take my shed that's, whatever the minimum square footage is, and I'm going to put my daughter in it, because why not? Right, like, I can't do that at any point. But we have a handful in, in the town that are grandfathered in. Well, where, no, that's what we're looking at, correct?
It can be, yes. So, that, that's up to you all, if
Well, no, 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 my question is, this is for properties that are, that are already existing. Because you, it's not a problem, it's nothing that can happen for future development. It's not
Right, because we can't, yeah, unless you wanted to change that code to say
Let's not go that far.
Right, okay.
You're going to put them in the weeds very quickly. So, so I will not agree that they cannot live there. You have to, anything with home stay, I think that the owner has to be there a certain amount of time a year.
I agree.
We're not a resort town.
And we, our home stay policy isn't, isn't it, you have to, it has to be your primary residency? And you have to live there for half a year? Okay. And so, in addition to that, if you have a ADU, you can, I guess what's on the table is, you can do a home stay there if you live in the primary residence, and you're there a half a day, a half a year, then you can utilize that accessory dwelling today. That exists as a home stay.
So you could do both of them, your home and accessory dwelling?
Yes.
That's what you're asking?
No, that's, yeah, to clarify, that's what we can do today.
They cannot rent out the accessory
Okay, they can't do that.
Right.
And that's why I, I think the, the public has come here and said, wait, wait a second. I live in the house, and I want to Airbnb my ADU.
Yes, so, that's what, the gentleman that has requested that it be looked into, he had an accessory unit. He did not realize that he was not able to rent that out as a home stay. He had a home stay inside his home, he, at his primary residence. And so then, when he realized that he was not allowed to have a home stay in his accessory unit, he has asked for, he asked a couple of the council members to, to check into maybe changing that. And that's how it ended up, that you all were asked to look into it.
Now, the other part of it too is, he could rent it out full-time, not as a home stay?
No.
No, okay.
So, we do not allow for accessory dwelling units. The only thing that we do allow by right is if it's like a mother-in-law suite, and it's someone, it's a caretaker, or you're, you know, associated with someone that's living there that either is in the home or that dwelling unit is being cared for.
You're not leasing it out.
Right.
So this particular person, if his daughter-in-law wants to move in there and pay him no grant, no problem?
Yeah.
Okay. To take care of him, or whatever, or just, I guess it doesn't even have to qualify as taking care of him. A family member or something, that they're not renting out?
It doesn't matter, as long as there's not a lease.
Okay.
Somehow associated.
So, okay, and they, do they have to be associated with the person that's living in the main home? So in other words, out of the kindness of his heart, he's going to let these people live in this ADU? And pay no grant? But that's okay for them to live there?
No, not necessarily.
I think you could probably fall back on to the, where we have the part in the ordinance where it says like, no more than two unrelated individuals. That's probably the closest in the code that we have that would fall back on a situation like that. Since we don't really experience this a lot, we don't have to explicitly write in the code addressing that.
Yeah.
And you said two, or was it three? Three unrelated
It's no more than two unrelated individuals, we currently allow.
Well, the section forty-two, six-six-four, that's our current code, right? So it does say, the use of accessories stretchers for living accommodations shall be prohibited. So that would go away, correct, with our, if we decide on this?
Uh, dependent on what it is that you all would decide that you would want to do. I mean, it, it's something that you could require a conditional use permit for something that you could change it entirely.
And so right now, if I'm just at my primary residence, if I want to do a home stay, is there a conditional use permit required, or no?
If you wanted it at your primary residence, in your home?
Maybe use off the, off the side, just
No.
No.
It's just, it's just a town process.
You have to register.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then pay
Is there a fee with that, or?
There's, you, you have to pay taxes on the stays there.
Yeah, yeah, the lodging tax.
Yeah.
But not a town fee.
And is there a restriction on how many times you can do that?
Per year.
Per year? Sorry, guys. Per year? I forget what we
I think there's, for home stays, or for like an Airbnb, that there's a limitation that I, do you remember that, Andrew? I thought we had put limitations on how long, or how many times a year that you could
How many days you can rent it out?
Maybe less than thirty days.
Yeah.
Per year?
Well, just add a time, I don't need a Airbnb thing, on how many stays they have.
Transient definitions, thirty days or less.
That, that was something that council did, did look at, and, and I would, I would have to go back and look at the particular, you know, the particulars of it. I'm not sure if you're, you're seeing it, Caroline, there, but it is a matter of, you know, that, that, the, as you mentioned earlier, the occupant has to be there for, or the resident, the, the owner has to be there for more than six months out of the year. And in what was referred to as more than thirty days. And that, that gets into changing from transient occupancy until full, full-time occupancy. And so, there, unless you're seeing it there, I don't think at the end of, the, the, the rules at the end of the day had the, had a requirement of the, the amount of days. I think it was a matter of, you know, that, that it could be, you know, that, that the six-month rule curtailed, that, you know
So it had to be less than
It had to be less than six months, because the person has to live there, you know, as their primary residence. Now, and it was said at council and planning commission at the time, and it was recognized that, that, you know, someone could be living at their residence if they lived there full, you know, full twelve months out of the year, but had Airbnb guests that live, you know, that they were renting a room. That could happen, you know, three hundred sixty-five days a year. That, that is my recollection of, of the conversation back when it was approved. I guess it was twenty, twenty nineteen?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think, I think one of the, what we're talking about too is having investors come in, buying up homes in Christiansburg, and basically not using it as a present, as a permanent residency, but Airbnb-ing them out, and using it strictly as an investment and not living there. So I think that's where the gist of this is, is coming from. And so now, it's expanded out a little bit further, so, okay, well, we're taking care of the, the home stay part of it. But now, hey, I've got an extra house. How about if that's my permanent house with this ADU on the side? Can I do that and rent it out, Airbnb it? And I think, Jennifer, your, your point was, no, I don't want them to be able to Airbnb anything that's on their property. If it's a mother, mother-in-law suite, and it's, they're living there full-time, yeah, that's different. But not to just Airbnb it out.
Right.
Does that make sense to you guys? That that's what, that's what's up in front of us right now, and council's just looking for our comments. And so I think you put on the back of this, let's see, moving forward, let's see, the amendment could allow existing non-conforming ADUs to be used as home stays with conditional use permits, provided that the owner resides there permanently in the, at, in the primary dwelling on the parcel. So, that's what's really here, and if, if we don't do anything on this, then right now, the people that have it would be in violation, according to what we have now. Because it says, ADUs are not permitted for home stays. So, there'd be some violations there. And if we do allow it, we would have to change that, and then be specific on it, and say, what, do we have them do a conditional use permit to be able to do it? And use their ADU for a home stay? If I, if I'm getting this all right? Did I say that right?
It sounded right to me.
Okay. Okay. And again, I heard from Jennifer, and Jennifer is basically saying, if you want your mother-in-law to live in the ADU, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm good with that, or, or another full-time residence. But I'm not going to let you Airbnb it out, or home stay it out.
Correct.
I agree with Jennifer. First thing that comes to my mind is beachfront property in certain resort towns, that you have a lot of things that happen there that shouldn't.
Yeah.
And with the Virginia tech games and other, other activities happening, I, I just see it going left very, very, very quick. I just don't think that Christiansburg should turn into that type of town. That's my stance on it.
So that would be a hard no?
That would be a hard no.
And it's not like, you know, we are a beach town, you know?
Right, but we do have a lot of
But we do have like the tech games and events.
And, and we have, yeah, and I mean, it's not big, big city problems, but when you look at what Blacksburg's facing during tech games, I mean, it was on the news a couple of years ago about all the things that were happening. And that's just the students, I mean, imagine what you're bringing to the town. I mean, I like the small-town feel, that's why I chose to live here. And like peace and quiet, I mean, there's, you know, it's okay to have fun, but I think it just opens up too many possibilities to have randomness come to our town.
Now, Blacksburg says yes, but no more than three unrelated individuals on the whole property?
That's Blacksburg.
Okay, I'm just and that's, could be why they're having some issues?
Yes.
Okay. Tom, what's your thoughts on it?
Well, as I said, I think we're having problems now without opening the floodgate. And as soon as you do, I think you're going to have a whole lot more problems. Just if nothing else, that's the tech games alone.
Yeah.
I mean, I live down the street from a number of hotels. And it's a disaster sometimes, just on our street, and we're a dead-end street.
Mike, how about you?
I'm, I'm saying thing, I mean, because if we think about this, the, the, if we allow home stays and ADUs
allow homestays and ADUs, and the primary, the person has to be their primary residence in the prim, in the house, in the main house, but they have, that means they have to live there six months, so, correct me if I'm wrong, if we did allow this, they could rent two different groups, ADU and primary residence during the football season, and then, you know, and, and each one would be able to take two families or eight occupants by our court ordinance, so that to me is, that's, that sounds like a lot, you know? I know I wouldn't wanna live next to an Airbnb that's, that's mainly football guests, you know, most of them are great, but, you know, that's, sometimes they do bring some problems, so.
And granted, it's, I mean, it is a short period of the year, but it is also, I mean, it garners a lot of attention and you don't want that, whatever happens, again, I look at, I'm a planner by trade, so I look at worst-case scenario, I plan by worst-case scenario, anything that could go wrong, more than likely will go wrong, and you, you start seeing a shift, and I mean, I guarantee there will be a lot more, a lot of complaints, I mean, Blacksburg, yeah, they've, they allow what they allow, but they also are having their issues.
Yeah.
My wife works there and quite frankly, I know exactly what goes on, and the town residents are very fed up with a lot of things that's, that are going on during school, school, uh, during the school semester, so.
Yep. Well, Mike, you make a good point, because right now it's open to just under six months, it could be homestay, and now if you allow the ADU, that's times two.
Mm-hmm.
So, which on the same property, um, yeah.
And that's not fair to our residents that are here.
Right.
They didn't sign up for that when they bought their house.
Sure, sure. So let me turn it to staff for part of the discussion, and, and let me look at the other side. This is a big burden on you guys for, how are we gonna control this?
Well, it's controlled by complaints, right?
Right.
Only if you're told about it.
Right, which, I mean, and that's the, the thing, um, Mr. Blackford, we didn't know that, that he was operating, nobody.
Right.
Complained until, you know, he, I think he didn't come in to get his.
He submitted, excuse me, he submitted an application and said it was an ADU, so that's the only reason we knew about it.
Right.
No one really complained or anything like that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, in, in that case, we didn't get a complaint, but he, um, and he did want me to tell you this too, um, that he received notification that, because he was planning on being here tonight, but I think maybe his wife didn't make it in time for them to be here.
Gotcha, yeah.
But, uh, that his Airbnb was in the top one percent world, in, top one percent worldwide,
Uh-uh, that means?
So I guess it was top rated in the top one.
High rating on, on Airbnb?
One percent.
Every stay in Airbnb, okay.
Yeah.
That's new technology.
So they, they rate them, every, every stay, you, you, the owner asks you to rate it, that's usually like a ten out of ten or something like that?
That's true.
And then they leave their comments.
Like reviews on Amazon.
So apparently it's a, I mean, these are the pictures of it, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That you submitted, so I mean.
In the packet, that's, that's pictures of his ADU, um, the actual accessory unit, not the one in his house. Um, so, um, but, yes, i- in other cases, it could be that someone might, might complain, um, and let us know that that, and, and, or it could be listed on one of the sites and, you know, the town see that it's there.
Well, that's the other way to look at and find it, is you can look onto Airbnb and locate homes available in Christiansburg, Virginia. And that's, of course, how we, um, identify those that are, um, doing the homestays and then that haven't filed or registered with the town. Yeah, I, you know, um, I think it might be opening up a can of worms to the extent that, that he hasn't had any complaints, but that doesn't mean that if we open it up similar to what Blacksburg is, um, I think we could be looking for more troubles down the line.
Well, another concern I would have is what, what's the state gonna do? Right now, you know, sure, I get the argument that, that there's only so many grandfather in ADUs, but we might lose the ability, the state might force us to allow ADUs and we, we lose all control over that, so.
Okay, um, I think you've heard from all of us, so, um, you can pass this along to town council, um, they can review, of course, the, the tape and see our comments, and I think it's pretty clear where we stand on, on our concerns.
Do we wanna take a vote just to show council?
I, I don't think there's a vote necessary on this, I think it's all discussion points.
Yeah.
Breta, Andrew, right?
Yeah, just, just discussion.
Yeah, just discussion. I think, I think that's why town council pushed it to us, to just get our feel for it, and it sounds like we're mammin' this, so. So good. Okay. All right, well, let's then circle back around to, um, um, the public hearing for our discussion point with, um, with commissioners. Thoughts, comments on the amendment to the Christiansburg code?
So it, it says the word subdivisions, you're, you're able to approve subdivisions, so that's all gonna be residential? What is this, what, what, can you define a subdivision if it's, if I'm not clear on that? That's what I, obviously, he's gonna explain, this was.
Yeah, well, since I've been working this capacity for, for, for a while now, so.
Do you wanna give your name and address?
Yeah, maybe more in one hundred East Main Street, so, and, um, so basically with the subdivision, um, it, it, it could be a subdivision of two lots, so certainly could, it, it's typically residential, uh, but it could be commercial as well, uh, so it, it really refers to, to any, any subdivision of land, uh, where you're creating two or more lots.
So subdivisioning, dividing, or subdividing?
Correct, right, yeah.
In my mind, I wanna go to a subdivision in my neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, and, and that, and that's fair, and that's fairly common, and that's where you're gonna have the larger subdivisions, so, uh, as the state, uh, has, has told us, you know, that, uh, basically, uh, that staff reviews should be up to forty-nine lots, um, when I believe, uh, you all discussed this with, uh, with Mr. Tripp last year, uh, prior to him leaving, um, there, there was a, uh, general consensus around eleven lots, uh, and, and I, that's why, you know, from a staff perspective, we wanted to stay at eleven lots, but looking at state code, we cannot require someone, uh, if they choose to just have a staff review, uh, from eleven to forty-nine lots, then, uh, then, then they would be able to have a staff review. If it's fifty or more lots, then they would have to come to, to planning commission. You know, you kind of dialing back to why this is, you know, this was discussed to begin with is because it does create a, a, um, you know, it's an administrative process where if it meets the requirements of the subdivision, uh, then, um, you know, then, then it is to be approved, and so, uh, in, as we've grown as a, as a town, and, uh, right now the street committee at the council level looks at anything that is beyond, uh, one lot line adjustment, um, and, uh, and then, uh, the, and then they look at any subdivision of two or more lots, as well as dedication of a public utility easement, uh, as, which can be water, sewer, stormwater.
Right.
Uh, and, um, and the dedication of any, any right-of-way, uh, so, uh, there, there is a lot that, um, that could be handled, uh, at the staff level, you know, that, that, because it is, you know, the subdivision rules being enforced, if, if that is something that, you, you know, the town would like, you know, to look at their subdivision rules and change their subdivision rules, then that would be, I think that would be proper, but right now, uh, there is a lot of review that hap, that, uh, that, that has to stop, you know, in order to schedule for, for a, a street committee council review, whereas if we're able to do more at the staff level, then it would allow for it to, to be more seamless with our, uh, with our other review processes, uh, that, that take place.
So where your key word was administrative?
Correct, yes, this is very different, uh, it's, 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 you really need to think of it, uh, you know, it, on the different, uh, in a different category, different box than, than what you all typically do.
Right.
Uh, you know, what you're typically doing is a legislative decision where you are weighing the pros and cons, you're looking at the comprehensive plan, you're hearing from the public, uh, you're, uh, you're, you're looking at, you know, what are the , uh, resources that the town has in this area, and then, and then taking all of those good planning, uh, decision points and, and got it coming up through discussion, uh, with a recommendation, uh, to, to town council, then, then, which does the, the same thing as elected officials in their capacity, uh, and so, um, and so this really would be, i- if a subdivision were to come to you, or, uh, say it is a fifteen-lot subdivision and there is a small cul-de-sac, uh, basically, by the time it gets to you, it provides an opportunity for the public to look at it, um, but, but staff had, will have already vetted it to the point where we believe that it meets the letter of the subdivision ordinance, that it meets the requirements.
Right.
So you all are, are really just looking at it and seeing if there are any issues, uh, and, and still hearing from the public, you know, because they would have a, a right to comment on it, um, but again, it really is, it is different than a legislative decision. If, if it does meet all of those requirements, then it should be approved.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
And then, uh, one last question, um, definition of agent?
Right, it, it's appointed by town council. And, uh, and it typically ha- has been a staff person, uh, and, and it is me at, at this time.
So this wouldn't cover any zoning or official use permits or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Just for subdivisions?
Correct, just for subdivisions, correct.
And then on the summary here, it does say, the agent may approve subdivisions no greater than eleven, but forty dash three A, it says, the planning commission may have the authority to potentially approve from the preliminary subdivision plots that may deliver more lots. So it's not real clear in the actual language that, that the, the agent cannot do anything over eleven?
Right.
You say that's basically what that says, but that's fine with me, so.
Right, yeah, because of, of state code that says that, you know, that, uh, that it, it cannot be take, it doesn't have, to be required to go to any other, you know, step than, than a staff review until it gets to fifty or more lots.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, from previous conversations and research by planning staff and then previous conversations with planning commission, uh, there was a desire to try to see if, you know, that we, we can work with most, you know, developers and say, we would, you know, we encourage you, uh, if you have a fifteen-lot subdivision, to go to the planning commission so that there is more public review of that.
So we, we aren't allowed to require the planning commission review under fifty lots? What understanding?
Correct, yeah, right, right, as, as we were reviewing state code, that was, that became pretty clear, and we consulted with our town attorney as well on that.
Okay.
And we'd be happy to provide the state code, uh, definitions to you all as well, or that information, if that was, be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any more comments on this part, commissioners? Are you clear as to what council is asking and staff is asking?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, do we feel confident to take a, a vote on this tonight? Or do we wanna see the, uh, the, uh, information that, that Andrew was just talking about? Or do we have enough to go on?
I think we have enough to go on.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I will second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
It would be easier if you just said those opposed.
What's that?
It'd be easier if you just said those opposed.
Yeah, right. Proved a call. Okay, moving on to the last agenda item, uh, other business, item seven, um, I'll open it up to you, staff, any other business?
I think I've confused you enough for one night, probably.
No, all is good.
Throwing too much at you.
I had a question.
Sure.
So, I kinda, I kinda like the idea of having an ADU ordinance that's, it seems it looks like it may be taken away from us, I kinda like the, the idea that we have one in place already, where does that originate? Does that originate this town staff, council? If somebody wants to get the ball rolling on a, on an ordinance?
Well. If you all would like us to, to work on something, then we can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be good, make sure that, that we've got something established and, and, uh, and that way, as long as it doesn't deviate from the state bill all that much, then we, we get to keep it. Good point.
Is that something we need to vote on or?
I, I don't, I don't think so, it's just as a suggestion to follow, staff to follow on that and then present back to, uh, council.
In the direction of?
Yeah.
Crafting ADU ordinance?
Okay, just period.
I guess the other side of that coin would be the state would not pass this, too.
Oh, sure.
We may do an ordinance that's not.
Sure, oh, good point, yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
Do you guys have anything to share?
Yes, um, we, on the seventeenth at five-thirty, we have a subcommittee meeting, um, for the comprehensive plan.
Subcommittee.
What time is that?
Uh, five-thirty, June seventeenth, yes, sir.
I'll send an email out next Monday.
Good, that'll be helpful.
Reminders are good.
Okay. I have nothing. All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do we have planning commission on the seventeenth?